Mississippi Board of Education, this is our June 19th, 2025 meeting. It is 10 o'clock a.m. We're on the fourth floor boardroom or in the fourth floor boardroom here at Central High School, which is the home of the Mississippi Department of Education, located at 359 Northwest Street, Jackson, Mississippi. So I officially call this meeting to order. One question is Dr. Barrett, did she make it on, Mr. Sanders? Okay, at this point, Dr. Barrett is out of country and was going to try to make an on to this meeting, so if she does come in, we'll make sure we recognize her in her place. At this time, I'd like you to stand for our pledge of invocation.
Thank you for standing, everybody please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you don't mind, please bow your heads with me. Most gracious heavenly Father, let us today do what is best for children in our state. Make every one of our decisions and the things we talk about today benefit our children and educational system which guides them into their futures. In his name we pray, amen. Always good to have a full house, so thank you for being here today. Members, you have before you the minutes from our May 15th meeting work session, also the special call board meeting of May 27th. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
No movement.
Bill Jean with the motion and Mr. Mayo with the second. Any questions about those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You also have before you the approval for today's meeting on the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for today's meeting?
Aye.
I got Mr. McGee here as a motion and Mr. Jacobs as a second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You also have before you the consent agenda, so for those that are not normally with us, we receive a list of board items well before the meeting. We have a chance to go through those, we call staff and ask questions, so we try to take care of some of these items in one motion, which we call a consent agenda. May I have approval, is there anything that needs to come off the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Bill motion, Mike second, I didn't hear the motion, Bill motion, Mike second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we get to come to the one part of our meetings that everybody's probably here to see today, so Jean, if you've got our recognition ceremony, we're ready to roll.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Mr. East, Dr. Evans and State Board members. Today's recognitions include an outstanding educator, an outstanding district community, and a cohort of outstanding teacher leaders. So first, we are honoring Dr. Lindsay Collier, a science teacher at the Mississippi School of the Arts, for being named the 2025 Mississippi Rural Teacher of the Year. Dr. Collier, please join Mr. East and Dr. Evans at the front of the boardroom. Recognizing that more than half of Mississippi schools are designated as rural, the program for research and evaluation for public schools known as PREPS established the Rural Teacher of the Year Award in 2021. The award celebrates educators who show a passion for teaching, learning, and making a difference in smaller schools and communities. Dr. Collier teaches 11th and 12th grade science classes including chemistry, botany, human anatomy and physiology, and earth and space science. Her passion for science started in childhood with her deep fascination with whales. These early experiences nurtured by her parents shaped her love for scientific discovery and set her on a path toward teaching and mentorship. In her classroom, Dr. Collier uses innovative, hands-on learning strategies such as game-based learning, scavenger hunts, discussions, and reflective journaling to gauge students and foster critical thinking. One of her signature journal prompts is, would you rather be a proton, neutron, or electron, and why? This prompt challenges students to explore scientific concepts and explain their reasoning in a fun and personal way. Dr. Collier believes educators who are passionate about their field of study can have a profound impact on students. Her experience teaching at the college level made her realize that students needed more support in high school to prepare for college. She believes teaching in a rural community gives her the chance to help students be successful before they reach college. Dr. Collier, you are welcome to make remarks at this time.
Well, thank you guys so much. It was an honor to be named Rural Teacher of the Year for Mississippi from Mississippi Rural Ed, which is under Mississippi PREPS at William Carey University, so it was an incredible blessing. I look forward to representing our state at the national level. I want to thank my school, Mississippi School of the Arts, my executive director, Dr. Hirsch, and my husband, who's representing our family, so I've got a wonderful team and I love what I do and thank you guys for the recognition.
Next, we are honoring the Clarkstown Municipal School District for earning the 2025 Community Engagement Council of Distinction Award. I would like to invite Clarkstown Superintendent Dr. Toya Matthews and Federal Programs Director Kristi Harris and your other group, if you'd like, to join Mr. East and Dr. Evans at the front of the boardroom. Yeah, community engagement councils are community-led groups that collaborate with schools and districts to enhance education. Councils include parents, educators, students, and community members who work together to foster inclusivity and accountability. Councils play a crucial role in using community expertise to support school improvement efforts. This is the second annual recognition of work that districts are doing to strengthen meaningful, relevant engagement of their communities. The award process involves an evaluation by independent panels, including application reviews, an interview, and a site visit. The Clarkstown Municipal School District is receiving the 2025 Community Engagement Council of Distinction Award for its exemplary council that follows a structured process for its establishment, demonstrates inclusivity, and sets data-driven goals for school improvement. MDE, in partnership with the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, congratulates the Clarkstown Municipal School District's Community Engagement Council for its commitment to community representation and active participation in improving schools. Dr. Matthews, Ms. Harris, you're welcome to make remarks at this time.
Just thankful for this opportunity and thankful for this council for coming in, stepping up, and helping us to support the goals and the strategic plan of the Clarkstown Municipal School District, and we are just appreciative of this recognition.
Dr. Matthews, can I ask a question real quick? Are all these folks educators or this community members or what, how do you make up, who are these people if you wouldn't mind telling us real quick?
So I have one retired educator that's here, but there's another one that's, she's on vacation, and the rest are, she's the former superintendent secretary and social worker, Ms. Butler worked for Farm Bureau, and Mr. Butler worked at Parshman, he retired for Parshman, so these are retired.
Probably has a certain presence that matters.
Good question, thank you.
Finally, we are honoring the second cohort of graduates of the Literacy Coach Academy of Mississippi. I would like to invite the graduates who are here today to join Mr. East and Dr. Evans at the front of the boardroom, as I call your names. Amanda Allen from the Quitman School District, Laquanda Isom, Marshall County School District, Savannah McKinnis from Ocean Springs School District, Tina Moore from South Panola Public School District, Kimberly Pierce from Tate County School District, Joelle Rains from Stone County School District, Shannon Robinson from Jackson Public School District, Lana Stevens from Simpson County School District, Jessica Malone from DeSoto County School District, and Leah Peacock from DeSoto County School District. And I believe only one can't be here, Vanessa Pearson from Water Valley School District. That's everybody, right? I got them all? Okay, all right. The Literacy Coach Academy of Mississippi is a professional development program that launched in 2023 that provides MDE's literacy coach training to educators who currently serve or will serve as a literacy coach in their districts. The academy trains kindergarten through fifth grade lead teachers and district coaches in the same evidence-based methods used by MDE literacy coaches. These graduates just completed a year-long rigorous course comparable to a college-level course. Since the passage of the Literacy-Based Promotion Act in 2013, MDE has hired and trained literacy coaches at the state level to support educators in schools with the lowest third-grade reading scores. MDE created this academy to ensure that other districts that want to hire their own literacy coaches have effectively trained coaches. Academy members receive intensive training in the fundamentals of literacy coaching, which involves different skills than teaching children. They learn best practices grounded in the science of reading, learn to model and observe lessons, and receive feedback during onsite visits and virtual classes. The Literacy Coach Academy of Mississippi is intended to increase the number of highly-trained coaches across the state and establish a more defined coaching role within districts and increase educators' understanding of evidence-based practices. Today's graduates are the second cohort of trailblazers in MDE's efforts to extend our literacy coaching model to benefit children statewide. So graduates, you're welcome to make remarks, and I believe there's three people that volunteered to speak, and the first up is Ms. Allen. Okay, so Ms. Amanda Allen?
Hi, yes, I'm Amanda Allen, I'm from Quitman School District, I'm the principal of Quitman Lower Elementary, so I'm not the typical candidate, but I do feel like I am the ideal candidate, and I'm thankful for my superintendent, Dr. Davis', support in this, because principals are instructional leaders and we should be coaching our teachers to build capacity and affirm best practices in the classroom, so I'd be appreciative of this opportunity, thank you.
Thank you, and Jessica Malone?
I am Jessica Malone from DeSoto County School District. I am one of the K-5 literacy specialists for the district, so we have a large district, and it's nice to be in a cooperative and collaborative group of like-minded educators as we are all unified in our attempt of growing our teachers, which the end result is student learning. That has been a big task as we have all been implementing our high-quality instructional materials, so we are also asking our teachers to be high-quality, professional learning, but that is exactly what this was for us. And now, instead of just going away and using it there, we have a group that we now have a network to reach out for support, not only from our instructors, but also from our cohort of educators as well, as we will continue to work on student growth and student learning through teacher knowledge.
Thank you, and Leah Peacock?
Hi, I'm Leah Peacock, I'm from DeSoto County as well, South Haven Elementary. We have seen such great growth in our school, being a coach there for the last three years, and the information that I gained through this academy just helped us come even further this year. Looking forward to seeing how much progress has made in the coming years, especially as I am moving from that role over here with MDE, and I've already had, I've already had the coach that is going to take my place in rolling through the third cohort, so we are moving and seeing great things, and I just appreciate Ms. Dunning here to represent us as well, and my husband and daughter and our family here, and supporting us in this past year as we've gone through this academy that has been so beneficial.
Thank you.
A lot of family here, Jean, if anyone wants to get up and get those pictures right quick, I see everybody crying, so, are you ready to go with the lead?
All right.
They're one of the reasons we went from 48 to 16.
It's my understanding that Wendy is online and has been online, we just have not been able to see her, so, Ms. Barrett, can you hear us? If you will, state your location for the minutes, please. Isn't that nice? Glad to have you with us, sorry that we Sorry that we did not recognize earlier.
I love my spirit.
Very good. All right. At this point, we'll move into our report of the state superintendent, who is wearing the blue shirt today.
Inside joke there. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Just, again, been a busy month, like every month is here. We are always on fast-forward here trying to move the state forward. So a couple of things. One, the strategic planning process. We've had very, several productive meetings, especially with Student Education, who is the organization that's helping us lead this work. Our next step is to get input, actually, we had a meeting yesterday. Mr. East alluded to it earlier when he was, the meeting, the planning meeting we had when we were approving the minutes. Our next step is to get input about our core values for education from stakeholder groups, which will include teachers, students, administrators, legislators, and large business leaders across our state. A legislative update, we, MDE's appropriations bill for the FY '26 is due to be signed by the governor today. This does include just under $3 billion in funding for schools, districts, charter schools, and fully funds MSFF. I just want to say, I feel as though as an agency, we were very, it was very clear the focus and the devotion that our legislature has for public education. We were very kind in helping us make sure we're pushing our endeavors, our endeavors forward. So some of the highlights include $3.5 million for Mississippi Teaching in Residency. Most people refer to it as MTR. A $2.2 million investment in a Mississippi statewide synchronous learning project. That's a project that's in conjunction with Mississippi public broadcasting. We're very excited about. $1 million increase in National Board Certification, funding for National Board Certification Teachers. One little side bit of information, Mississippi ranks fourth in the nation in the percentage of teachers who hold national certifications. And we all know the advantages for our students with those teachers that have received that training. Also, a $2 million increase in our ESA program. The three special schools received slight increases, and the Mississippi School for Deaf and Blind, MSDB, received an additional $1 million allocation for the purpose of purchasing Braille materials. Again, like I said earlier, I truly appreciate that support from the Mississippi Legislature there. There's great relationships there. Ms. Holly Spivey is a, she probably doesn't want me to say this, but she's a huge driving force in this happening. Like, she is a huge piece of this, and I appreciate her. I don't say that publicly enough, so I truly appreciate her. Hope she's here listening. So, there, that's our funding update. Now, US Department of USDA and MDE's request to continue funding, basically, the only thing we've had, we've got an approval on so far is funding for Paper, which is an online tutoring platform, which will be extended through March 31st of 2026. Like I said earlier in our budget hearing, even though we've had these denials, we've tried as best as we could to find other ways to fund these projects. So, working with Dr. Nelson, her office, Office of Federal Programs, we've tried to be very creative within, while still at the same time staying inside the guardrails of what is and isn't eligible. I didn't want to say that publicly, because I definitely can push hard, and I need people to say, "Hang on, we can't do that." But we are doing our best to make sure we're providing, continuing to provide those same level of services to our districts. And we are currently, so we have not heard back on the late extension requests for our districts, that, the total number of requests left me right now, but there's several, several districts that obviously requested that late liquidation. What I would tell you is the denials are not proprietary just to Mississippi. We're seeing those, they're across the country, it's that way. So it is very concerning, the potential outcome for all that, because we got to, we do need to remember that behind every one of those late liquidation projects, that there's a denial. The odds are there's a Mississippi contractor, our Mississippi business is not receiving payment for services they've rendered. So that's very troublesome for me, and I know, I know it is each of you. Some of the stakeholder meetings that we've had, Dr. Vanford and I met with the State Teachers of the Year. It was a group of probably the last, there was about eight people, I think, total that were there. Dr. Vanford, I think I'm somewhere in that neighborhood. I also had a couple online that were meeting. And what we were doing was just having a conversation as to what that process looks like. We already do an outstanding job, but just how we can involve them more, and not only just the State Teachers of the Year, but how can we involve the finalists as well? Because we know they have a lot to contribute to, you know, to the state, and we want to make sure that people who want to contribute, we create opportunities for them to participate. That's very, that's very important. Superintendent Advisory Committee, we had a meeting. Basically, the purpose of that was to receive input and feedback on the strategic planning process. They had some form of what you, as a board, did yesterday, not to, anywhere near to that scale, but getting some information from them, as well as, we gave them an update on the planning for the new Mississippi Superintendents Institute. Had a meeting with Accelerate Mississippi, John Farrell, Brett Robinson, and I met with Accelerate Mississippi leaders there, and Dr. Taylor, her office, to talk about collaboration opportunities to strengthen workforce development across the state. Some of the topics involved, meetings with each of the eight ecosystems. We are in the process of working on a strategic plan for, that gets down to a granular enough level that it involves each of those eight. Also, we are looking at what data points they already collect and we collect to be able to build out a bit of a reporting dashboard, if you will, for, call it a report card right now, we'll come up with a much better name than that, of the efforts that our districts are putting forward in those areas across the state. And it also helps us, through that coordination and that, like I said earlier, that defining of those roles of IHL, K-12, IHL Community College and K-12, it's going to allow us as a department to make some decisions on how we want to push funding forward, in combination with the districts. Right? It's not like us just deciding to do this. But we're trying to get in line with what, what business and industry needs, what those high-wage, high-demand sector jobs are. Because if you see, I know you see this, Mississippi's constantly having large-scale business and industry locate here. And I feel like it's my job to make sure that we're providing the support for our districts to be able to create a workforce for them. Because that, the business and industry locating here, to be honest with you, is outpaced. It came, it's almost like the cart came before the horse, if you will. So we're working hard to try to, try to accomplish that. Also, exploring additional credentials and opportunities for students before they leave high school, and making sure those credentials aren't just any credential, that they're actually usable credentials that business and industry recognizes, and it's not just another thing, if that makes sense. Don't mean to be negative, but that's very important. If we're going to do it, that it's, that it makes a difference, right? And identifying some of the common problems in that alignment, and that's that, that conversation about outlining the processes among the different agencies. Some of the speaking engagements, the Making Connections Conference, was lucky enough to have the opportunity to be the keynote there. That is, this is the first time I'd ever been to that conference. That is a huge, there is a, there was like 1,500 teachers there. And I was only able to be there just for a short period of time, I drove down and drove back, but I was, very good conference. That is a huge conference. I believe they say it's the largest teacher conference in the state. So, very impressed there and the work there. S. Risa puts that on Warren Woodrow, so they have a lot of work there on their part. Basically talked about the state's progress from an educational standpoint, as well as the initiatives we have moving forward. Also spoke at Student Education's Higher Education Leadership Conference, spoke on a panel there about the primary focus, the primary focus of the panel was looking at the alignment of the K-12 world and the higher ed world, and how we better align the higher ed world with what we need in the K-12 world, because in the end, that's where the educators end up coming from. But it wasn't just focused on the educator, the teacher, the teacher pipeline, it was also focused on the pipeline in the business and industry, and making sure, and we had a conversation around, you know, making sure that we and our community colleges and universities looking at our degree offerings, and are, is there alignment with the degrees we're offering and people going directly into that field? Because in the end, it comes down to a financial conversation as well, right? Because your dollars providing, paying for that education, is it benefiting you in the end? So that was, that was a really good, really good group of people. Had another Supertalk interview, and it was related back to the kids count, the kids count ranking, which is an outstanding, I don't think we've mentioned that, we've had it, we've mentioned it non-verbally on the screen, but that outstanding success, we need to give Mississippi a round of applause for going from 48 to 16. Let's see here. And then, I believe that's, Ms. Chairman, I believe that's it.
Thank you very much for that report. First, I want to tell the board members, thank you for your work. We've been up here for, it's going to be 48 hours, two days now. I appreciate your work yesterday and what the work we're doing today. I would like to call to the front Mary Werner, one of our board members, and Bill Jacobs. We have a little presentation we would like to make as a board.
This is a hard day for a lot of us. Sonia's retiring and leaving after 40 years of...
Forty years, how's that?
We have a little resolution for you. Put on my glasses so I can get this. Sonia called me the other day, said, "I'm going to get a call from Glenn." I said, "I have a thing I know what this is about." So, we have a resolution. Whereas Sonia M. Amos has dedicated over 28 years of distinguished service to the Mississippi Department of Education, and more than 40 years in the fields of accounting, auditing, and public service. And whereas, her service was recognized by the Mississippi Legislature with her 2015 Senate confirmation as a Deputy Superintendent of the Office of Educational Accountability. And whereas, Mrs. Amos has served with leadership and integrity in numerous roles at the Mississippi Department of Education, including Chief Deputy of Educational Accountability, Director of Business Services, Associate State Superintendent for both Financial Management and Innovation and School Improvement, Director of Internal Accountability, and Director of Internal Audit. And what else do you have? Whereas, in her most recent role of Chief Deputy of Educational Accountability, Mrs. Amos provided critical oversight of the bureaus of internal audit, program evaluations, and public reporting, directly supporting the mission and accountability of the State Board of Education and keeping us all on time.
In line.
And whereas, Mrs. Amos began her career in public services, service at the Office of the State Auditor, where she served for over eight years in various auditing leadership roles, directing audit teams, and ensuring financial integrity across the state agency. And whereas, her professional journey also included valuable experience in the private sector, where she developed a strong foundation in auditing, financial reporting, and tax preparation. And whereas, Mrs. Amos is a proud graduate of Mississippi College, where she earned a Bachelor of Science in Business Administration with a major in accounting, and has been recognized with numerous honors, including the Mississippi Society of Certified Public Accountants Scholarship Award, the Chapman and Company CPA Scholarship Award, and the Mississippi College Gold Medal Award. And whereas, throughout her career, Mrs. Amos has demonstrated a commitment to excellence, accountability, and advancement of education in Mississippi. Therefore... Therefore, be it resolved that on the 19th day of June 2025, the Mississippi State Board of Education does hereby express this gratitude, commendation to Sonia M. Amos for her service and contributions to the state of Mississippi in the field of public education.
Well, 40 years sure does pluck five thousand. While being that, I've just been, I've raised four wonderful children. When I received this position 11 years ago as a deputy, we had three boys in college and our little girl was 10. Now we have three grown men who have their own jobs, and a 21-year-old who's goal is to go to med school soon. So thank you so much for allowing me to be your deputy. It's deserved. It has been the honor of my career to get to work with such wonderful people who are committed to improving education in our state. That's what made this decision so hard, just working with such wonderful people, who are all here for the same, same reasons. I would also like to introduce the Dream Team in the Office of Accountability. Could y'all rise? I could not have done the work for the board and the other responsibilities without the Dream Team. I'd also like to thank my colleagues at MDE. For almost 29 years, you've been my friend, you've been collaborative with me, and I've gotten to know each and every one of you, and I'm so thankful for your friendships. And I will miss each and every one of you and wish you all the best. Thanks.
Normally at this time, we would have a report from our student representatives. However, our senior representative has graduated, is moving on, and then our junior representative is in Washington, DC today for the NRECA Youth Leadership Council. Y'all no more miss this name, so I'll hit it when I get to it. We had the honor yesterday, having gone through a process of over 30 applicants, which we have a subcommittee that does that from across the state, and then that group was narrowed down to four candidates that we had the honor yesterday to really talk to and really, quite frankly, had a lot of fun with four very sharp individuals. All the candidates were exceptional, and the board enjoyed getting to know each of them through the process. The following junior representative appointments were made, and for our next board meeting, Ms. Michelle Shea from Lamarck County School District was selected as a junior representative, and Mr. Price-Denham from Lamarck County School District was selected as the alternate. The juniors, as I just said, the junior student representative will serve a two-year term that will, again, starting on July the 1st. So I know that we have an outstanding junior representative coming in, and I want to thank you for the work that you did moving into the board meeting yesterday, what we were able to discuss with these students. Outstanding work. Thank you. There is, I was trying to practice a little Chinese yesterday, and so Ms. Stroud told me, "Don't embarrass us again," so I have to make sure that I have these pronunciations proper. I know my weakness is Billy Jean. I do not think we have any subcommittee reports unless there's somebody that wants to chime in that I'm not aware of. So moving right along, we'll begin with the agenda. Action item number one, I believe that's going to be Paula and her team, or Allen and And Wendy, I'm sorry, Wendy.
Pretty intimidating if you step up a book that looks like that.
It's impressive.
I didn't print all my items.
I just have blank pages around here.
Dr. Murphy added like two or three pages to the consent agenda out of his office this month. So, good morning. This item is the approval, or seeking approval, to eliminate the administration of the US History Assessment as a graduation requirement, and also, which would in turn eliminate it from our accountability system, which we'll talk more about in item three. This is following the APA comment period that we asked the board to approve. We received 20 comments in support of the removal, 16 against the proposal to remove. Three of the comments were neutral, and five of the comments were off-topic. At this time, the MDE... At this time, the MDE's recommendation remains consistent as presented last month, and that is to move forward in eliminating the administration of the assessment as a graduation requirement and use in the accountability system. Ms. Clemens may want to add, her team was responsible for putting together the comment chart that you have been provided, so you have a copy of all the comments, the summary chart that does include MDE's response to the comment. So, we want to thank her team for having that responsibility. And so, this would update, this item, A, B, and C, would update the board policy that references the assessment as a graduation requirement, and then also make the changes in the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards, documents all of the sections that refer to the history test as an end-of-course requirement.
Do we have any questions or comments?
I think I'm going to state the obvious, but I would like you to confirm this for me. This does not remove U.S. History as a requirement for what students have to take in high school, correct?
That is correct.
It just removes the test.
That is correct.
So, we will continue to require our high schools to teach U.S. History.
Students are required to have a Carnegie unit, that'll be one of their 24, to graduate from high school.
They still have an end-of-course test to pass to...
At the local level.
Yeah, the class is still tested, just not as a state test.
They'll receive formative and summative assessments.
In the classroom. And we have informally had the discussion of what, if the board approves to eliminate it, releasing our items to the local districts to have, to utilize in building their own local assessments, if they would like to do that. That's a very informal, unofficial conversation, but that's one of the things that we had discussed that we could do with our current item bank of U.S. History. And back to your point, Mr. Miller, like I should have said, the graduation requirements are twofold. So, we do have requirements that, as Ms. Clemens spoke to, for the Carnegie units that are required for graduation. And the State Board sets the minimum at 24, and U.S. History is one of those. Local school districts may exceed the 24 in requirements, and most do, but the board establishes the minimum. And then there's a separate graduation requirement for the end-of-course assessments.
I just wanted to be very clear that we are not removing U.S. History from the curriculum in our high schools.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Under Office of Chief Accountability Officer, do I have a motion to approve item number one? Billy Jean, second. Mr. Miller. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? One nay. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Motion carries. Moving to item number two, under the Office of Chief Accountability Officer. This is Allen's turn.
That's right, you're right.
English Language Proficiency and Accelerus.
I don't have the big binder, mine's on my computer.
Oh, I'll share here. And so, we'll, oh yeah, some people...
Could be worse.
A lot of paper, but I'm a paper person. So, this item, Allen will discuss, but we, as you know, we had an RFP that we changed the assessment for our ELPT requirement for English Language Learner. So, as a result of the change in the assessment, we're going to need to set standards. So, Allen is going to provide a brief overview of this item.
So, we went from an English Language Proficiency Test called Lost Lengths to now Alpha 21. And the assessment tests the same domains, which are listed in your backup, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. The last time we established exit requirements, which is a federal requirement, was in 2017. And so, this is just to establish those exit requirements as required by federal law for the new assessment. One other thing to point out is the new assessment offers an alternate assessment for students that have learning disabilities. So, that's a new service that we're providing through this vendor and this assessment. And then you'll see the, in your backup, the exit requirements for the summative or proficiency levels of four or higher in all language domains, listening, reading, speaking, and writing. That is fairly consistent with our prior assessment. Proficiency was required in each of the domains, with the exception that the prior assessment had an overall proficiency level. This one doesn't have an overall proficiency level, has an overall description of proficiency. But a minor difference in the assessments.
Any questions or comments? Pardon me when I get back to where I'm supposed to be here. Under Office of Chief Accountability Officer, do I have a motion to approve item number two?
I'm moved.
Mayo, second. Ms. Werner. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You guys still have the floor for item number three.
So, item number three is the revisions to the business rules of our statewide accountability system. This has been an ongoing discussion since February, when we brought the changes to you to submit to the United States Department of Education for revisions to our state plan. And so, we've gone through the federal APA public comment process. They don't refer to it as APA, but the federal required public comment process for this, and have received a response from Ed regarding the approval of those revisions. And then we began the process with the State Board for public comment. And we, the public comment period was from April 17th through May the 23rd. We did receive a few comments regarding the item, and but as a result of those comments, we are not recommending any changes to the business rules. So, we'll provide a brief summary of that for you, and we can walk through each of the items that are changing again, if it's the pleasure of the board. But the elimination of the U.S. History Test in the accountability system and utilizing those points for the Mississippi Readiness Index is the primary change. And so...
Paul, I know that puts us a little longer, but I think just kind of go through those right quickly for us.
Okay, we'll be happy to do that.
The business rule changes or the comments?
The, both, right?
Yeah, the business rule. And look, we don't need a pistol, just kind of an overview real quick through that. I just think it's important that, since we're being streamed across the state, that...
Okay.
Probably should have asked you all that yesterday, I apologize.
That's okay. And just a reminder, these business rule changes will go into effect with the upcoming school year. So, the accountability results that will be presented to the board in September are based on the current business rules. So, no changes will be made until the September 26th.
And again, that's why let's go through them, because they're going to be new and that way folks can hear them today in June and not be scrambling around in July.
Yes, so we did receive six public comments, and I'll just summarize kind of overall feedback on that. There was some concern about the levels of rigor in the assessment component of the readiness component, recognition of exceptional performance, for example, getting a 25 or higher on the ACT and super score. The intent, when the county task force talked about this, was to recognize both lower performance standards that we have not recognized in the past that may provide a path for success for students, but also to, in the same way of doing that, also to recognize exceptional performance above and beyond. So, that was the intent, and that was the reason why we put both of those in. Another example is ACT work keys. We previously did not recognize a bronze on ACT work keys at all in the accountability system. We added that in, but now we've also added in a score if you receive a platinum on ACT work key. So, that's the top of the end. So, we just expanded our range of recognition across those different performance measures. And that was not, so it's a readiness index, and it's going to provide an overall score that shows how students are performing in a school or district across all of those different readiness measures that we're looking at. There were some discussions about diploma endorsements and some details or critique around those particular endorsements and how those might be altered. The Office of Secondary Education, under the Chief Academic Officer, they're the ones that develop the diploma endorsements. We don't develop those in accountability. We just are recognizing those in accountability now for the first time. So, if we want to make changes to the diploma endorsements or enhancements to those, we can go through that process with the Office of Secondary Education. Some of you may recall that we have a new JROTC endorsement, and that's being included in the accountability model in this measure as well. So, those are things that can be changed in the future if needed. And then the last is really a lot of concern or comments around how we operationalize these measures. So, this is going to be what we're trying to get at in the business rule changes that you've seen. And there's a lot of, it really gets down into the weeds, especially around which students would we identify to include in these measures of performance for readiness. We're using Senior Snapshot, and Senior Snapshot is a minimum enrollment requirement that currently exists in the accountability model that says that students have to be enrolled beginning in month one of their 10th grade year, and then be continuously enrolled in a public school in Mississippi until they complete. So, they could graduate early, they could graduate on time at the end of their senior year. They need to be enrolled continuously through that period to be included. And the reason that we do that is to, we want to capture students that districts have had the opportunity to influence their outcomes, obviously. You don't want a student enrolling one month, and then they're there two months, and then they leave, and then they're included in your accountability measures. So, the Senior Snapshot gives us a way to make sure that who we're including in the calculation is an appropriate class of students or group of students. So, we will likely, we have tried to define that as best we can in the business rules, and that's probably the biggest change that you'll see in the business rule changes, is how we incorporate Senior Snapshot into these new measures to identify which students we include in the assessment measure for readiness and in the achievement measure, which is our diploma endorsements. That is what we have outlined right now in the business rules is the best way that we can think of to approach that and to fit into the current way that we collect data. If we need to make adjustments as we go forward, we will do that, just like we have in the past with accountability business rules. What we would like to do first is to get our accountability data from this year, and we're asking all districts to enter in all of these data points, including SAT scores, ASVAB scores, ACT super scores. We're asking them to enter those this year so that we can run impact data on this year's data to predict what outcomes would have been under the new accountability system, under this, under the new business rules. And will also help us identify any technical problems that we may need to adjust along the way, and we'll bring those back to you if we need to adjust the business rules. Because at this point, we're just, some of these things we're trying to anticipate, but we're not going to capture all of the little nuances that may occur.
Can I ask a question about that, though?
Sure.
Senior Snapshot. One of the comments I know talked about at what point non-completers are getting counted, you know, through a certain length. In the scores we do today, does that include everybody, whether they graduated or not, in their cohort or wherever they should have been?
So, right now, Senior Snapshot is used for the college and career readiness component, which is ACT and ACT work keys. If they, if they exit with a completion status, or they graduate, graduate early, they're included in there. What's currently not being captured is if a student drops out.
Right, that's right.
And so, that's one of the changes in the business rules that we would like to, if a student drops out after they've had the opportunity to take all the assessments, so after the end of their junior year into their senior year, we want to pull those in and include those in measures. So, that's one of the, one of the changes to Senior Snapshot. But that also allows us to capture that information in these new readiness measures, because now we've got the assessment piece, which is ACT and ACT work keys, but we've also got the completion status. So, diploma endorsements, graduating on time or not.
Will it negatively affect this, prior to that standard, the people that dropped out, we didn't put in the score, right? Now that people, that group will be in the score, so it will have a potential negative effect, at least to some degree, because you've got a new population that didn't graduate, so they likely were not successfully completing parts of the, successful in the accountability or in the readiness.
Well, hopefully, students that drop out after their junior year, well, they will have, they should have already taken the ACT assessment under the, because the state administration is during their junior year. So, they would have a score in there. But you're right, it could have some negative impact, but we're doing this in conjunction with setting new standards. So, it would have, it wouldn't have negative impact relative to the old model. So, it'll have, the measures will be set based on the new standards.
And also, go back to work keys. So, now we will be valuing work keys, brons in the accountability model.
Correct.
That's right. It will give...
Yes, sir.
Minor credit, but it does give credit in the...
That brings us to brons and platinum, platinum, for anybody that's one understanding. Good questions. Anybody else have a question? Thank you, I appreciate y'all doing that. I just felt like that was pretty important today with some of these changes. And also the fact that, we're going to say it again, these go into effect for next school year, so districts have got now 12, eight weeks, whatever, to adjust and make sure that their plans are accurate. So, thank you very much for this work and the timely fashion it was done in. Motion to approve item number three. Mr. McGee? Jacobs? Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Say whatever you want to, sir.
Just one point...
As Aaron walks up, Dr. Evans would like to say a few things.
Just one point of clarification. So, the current assessment results that districts have that are in preliminary form, it's very important that we understand that there was zero changes in anything to do with those assessment results. So, there's been a little bit of like confusion maybe out there, but we changed nothing. MDE changed nothing. So, I just want to make sure and say that to our people that are listening with us, and make sure if you were asked that question, that you...
Right, we have fixed scales.
Yes, thank you.
The assessments at the performance level cuts. The raw score that it takes to achieve that scale score may change from one year to the next, but the skill score...
That has been the case for the last 10 years.
That's right, that's right.
I'm sorry.
But I had to be careful, because like I've gotten messages from individuals, and they've said, "Did the cuts change?" And then I've said, "No, the cuts remain the same." And then they're actually talking about the raw score. So, I've had to clarify my responses to indicate that.
Very well, thank you. Glad to have you with us today, Aaron. I do not know about the person who brought with you, but I feel sure he's important to the discussion we're going to have today.
I don't know, I don't know about that, but...
All right.
Good morning, board. So, the first item, this is kind of a two-part. There's a tab, item four and item five. Item four is specifically information only. If you recall, back in May, we asked for approval to begin the APA process on a policy that we were directed by the legislature to create for House Bill 1193. And within very few days, we received requests for an oral proceeding on that policy. We received over 40 requests for a hearing, plus a request from a group of legislators. So, we went ahead and we scheduled that public hearing. We provided notice through the Secretary of State's website, through the Clarion ledger, as well as advertised it on our website with information on how to register to be a speaker. We ultimately had five individuals that registered to speak, and Mr. Kent will go into more of that. But this hearing was conducted last week on June 10th, 10th, 11th? Last week. And the transcript is provided as your backup, and then I will let Mr. Kent, he served as the design... the designated hearing officer, so I'll let him give you a rundown.
Thank you, ma'am. And I want to thank the board for the opportunity of serving as your hearing officer. I appreciate that. As Ms. Meyer explained, the preparation for conducting one of these public hearings is fairly extensive, because we want to make sure that we minimize disruption, confusion, that we stay extremely well organized, and that we capture the thoughts that the various speakers are trying to communicate. So there's a degree of tension, I guess, prior to this, to make sure that we don't misstep in any way. I say all that to say that after that, we were, actually had to recess a couple of times during the course of the hearing, because we were trying to make sure that we actually had a speaker. We only had five speakers that registered to speak. Only two actually were in attendance, and one of the two chose, declined to speak. So we only had one presentation. And it was a very, very nice young woman who described the benefit that she had derived personally, insights, value added, from a DEI course that she had taken at one of our in-state universities. And it was a good presentation. But at the end of the day, the hearing was anticlimactic, I guess, would be the way I would describe it.
In all seriousness, thank you very much for holding these hearings for us. I know they are very contentious sometimes and do take a lot of planning, so thank you very much for that work, Mr. Kent.
And.
Mike and I go too far back. We kind of throw barbs at each other every once in a while, just for the fun of it.
Sure.
But again, thank you very much for stepping in to handling this kind of piece.
Sure.
And in full transparency, there were about, I would say, 30 people in attendance. And so what we did, knowing that there was only one speaker, for those that attended, we did give them the option to submit a written comment to the MDE. Only those in attendance we would receive, because our comment period for the policy had closed the night before. And in that, we received one additional written comment.
Questions on action, on number four here, item four?
Did I miss the additional comment? I read the transcript thoroughly. I didn't see.
It's in the next board item. We combined all of the written comments in that.
I'll just move to item number five.
Okay. Item number five is our request for final approval to establish that new policy, 100.1 State Board Policy, Chapter 100, Rule 100.1, Compliance with State Law Regarding Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Prohibitions, Complaint Process, and Investigations. What you have as your backup is the public comment chart, along with all of the public comments received and the policy. At this time, we are not recommending any changes to our policy. If you've had the opportunity to read through the chart, a lot of the comments addressed the law itself, addressed definitions in the law, and requested either expansion, interpretation, or further definitions on what's already in the law, which was not the charge of the State Board. The State Board was charged with developing a complaint process and investigation process. There were some additional comments made that were more specific to what local districts may do, and we operate in a state with local district controls. So we referenced that those local districts, based on their needs, will be able to build upon this minimum required complaint process and investigation procedures to fit the needs of their particular community. But if there are any questions, at this point in time, we are requesting final approval for the APA process. It'll be a 30-day window on the policy with no changes.
Motion?
So moved.
Through it.
Second.
Mayo, any other comments or questions? Thank you both for the work so far. I know that our role here is to make sure we do legally what we're supposed to do based on the laws that we have to follow in our state. I hope I've said that correctly. So this is another last part of the APA process moving forward. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Before you, our consent agenda, which we approved earlier. May I have a motion to approve our consent? Did I miss one? I'm sorry. The contracts, I'm sorry. Working too fast here today. Ms. Wiggins, you're back up. Please forgive me. We have a couple of those that I've missed.
Hello again, board. So we've got six contracts to bring before you this morning. Three are new contracts, three are modifications. And I'll just jump right in. The first one is a new contract with Power for Cleaning LLC, and this is a contract for three years to provide cleaning services to the administrative building located on the campus of MSDB, which currently houses our Office of Early Childhood Education staff. The amount of this contract is $176,000.
Why don't we go through all of those at once? We'll do it all in one motion at the end. If anybody wants to pull one, we'll do that.
Sounds good. Okay. So the second one is a modification to a contract we currently have with EMS Link, who supports our child nutrition management system. This contract adds time and $30,000, is modified to add $30,000 to enhance the system so that it is now able to capture summer, seemingly summer option data as a compliance reporting The next one is a modification, also with a current vendor, Business Computers of Memphis, and this actually adds an additional year to the contract to continue the services that they're providing in terms of managing the database that supports S-Back in our school nurses' database. It's an increase of $20,000. The next one is a new contract, and this is a contract with Mr. Kent to continue to provide services to the agency related to a host of technical and academic support items, to work with Consolidated School Districts of Transformation, also to serve as a hearing officer, as you've heard earlier, and additional special assignments. This contract is a one-year contract at an amount of $156,192. The next one is a modification, and this is a no-cost modification. It just extends the time this contract is awarded to Applied Enterprise Management Corporation that just allows us to complete the work so that it aligns with the conclusion of the SLDS grant, which is funding this contract. The last one is a contract, is a new contract for us. It is a contract with Data Recognition Corporation. This contract actually represents what previously, it's a consolidation of previous contracts we held with multiple vendors. This contract is awarded as a five-year contract with a not-to-exceed of $81 million. This contract, as you will see, also provides additional services available, not currently available to us under our original contract, and you can see that information in the board item as it's provided to you.
Now I'm back on schedule. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve items 6A through 6F?
So moved.
Warner, Ms. Brown, any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. Thank you, Wendy. Now, moving to number seven.
Great. So we've got four grants for you this morning. The first one, our competitive grants issued under the McKinney-Vento Education for Homeless Children and Youth Program. It awards $5.8 million. They are three-year, it's a three-year grant, they're three-year competitive grants, and the grants are, will service 13 school districts. The second one is a modification to provide an additional year for a literacy coach, EIR, in support of Holmes County Consolidated School District. That increases $100,000, and it extends to June 30, 2026. The next one provides competitive grants through our MCOPS program at a total of $1.8 million, and that services 278 schools with a reported 171 resource officers. That total amount is $1.8 million. The last one is a modification to extend the grant for the Special Education Teacher Mentor Program Coordinator, EIR, in support of the Ocean Springs School District. This modification adds an additional year with the increase of $100,000.
Motion to approve items 7A through 7D. Mr. Mayo, the motion. Mr. Jacob, second. Again, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right. Now I'm right. So now we're to the point of the meeting on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve items A? Make sure I get these all right here. Through AJ, concerning, that's right, we pulled AJ. So it is a, thank you, Mr. Mayo, for that catch. Motion to approve those items. Mr. Mayo, second. Ms. Warner, any other comments or questions on those? Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Wendy. We need to go into executive session today. Okay. Mr. Minton?
Deputy Director, State Agencies, Attorney General Office.
Very good. Matt, you want to get us started?
I moved that the board consider making a close determination of the need to go into executive session on various matters that may impact current or prospective litigation.
By the motion, second, Mr. Mayo. All in, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The vote does, but not the discussion.
And now we can go to the motion.
We have determined a need to go into executive session. We are now back in regular session at this time.
And I move that the board go into executive session regarding two separate matters. Strategy session on the recently filed suit on House Bill 1193, and number two, to hear oral arguments of the parties in the matter of educator license number 237037, and deliberate merits of the appeal arguments with respect to the issuance of an appeal final order, such executive session be in accord with the listed code indicated 254174B.
Motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Mayo, any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wendy's good, yes.
We're now in executive session.
Ladies and gentlemen, the State Board of Education made an executive session to consider the appeal of Antoine Bourne, education license number 237037, and has voted to affirm the decision of the hearing subcommittee of the Commission of Teacher and Administration, Education, Certification, and Licenseur. All right, do we have any reports on meetings anyone needs to take? Mass is coming up in July, is there anyone that wants to go to Mass or do we need to do a group thing like we did for Dr. McGeehee?
Can I give you a, maybe?
It doesn't matter, let's just, let's vote that everybody may attend and that way I think we're good. May I have a motion for that to attend Mass? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other things that we need to do moving forward? Deborah, thank you very much for this script, longest one I've ever dealt with, appreciate that. The July board meeting will be held on July 17th in Jackson, Mississippi at the Central High School building in the fourth floor boardroom, starting at 10 o'clock. May I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Warner? Mr. Bayo? Let's do Ms. Stroud on the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much for your service today and yesterday, thank you. Thank you, sir.